Start.
Yeah.
So we'll call the regular meeting to order on numbers are present and we will start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Just have one, and yo, Jane Wislowski, if you would like to speak, you may. Since you're the only member of the public, if you'd like to speak, you may.
No, I'm just here to listen. Thanks. Thanks, girl.
Good to have you. Yeah, quite a bit. I gotta add a few things. You guys, any time constraints?
No time constraints.
Well, I have, I'll make it work.
Preemptively.
No, I actually have other, right, my text.
What time?
Ten thirty.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I can't, I'm not flexible.
All right. Oh, comments, geez. I, I was a weekend away. I didn't think about much to add other than obviously, the police commission is busy these days. There'll be another meeting tomorrow night. Obviously, we have a, an executive session with Park and Rec at five thirty, and then the executive session with the police commission at six thirty. So we'll see. And then I don't know what else will happen at that police commission meeting, if anything.
Carl, can you just clarify the six thirty executive session? That's for you.
Well, as ex officio, I will be attending. Yes. Yes. Yeah, I don't believe, I don't believe it allows an executive session in the board.
Just wanted to.
I can, yeah.
It would make sense, I think, not to be allowed at this point in time.
But.
It would make sense that we shouldn't be allowed.
Well, I don't know. I mean, yeah, anyway, I can ask. So obviously, Public Works has been busy lately. They're getting Sunday storms, which they haven't had overtime in years, and now they're getting all this double time on Sundays. One other thing that's just minor thing. So, you know, the library is sometimes kind of a last thought, and I don't mean that in a bad way. I do, you know, when the governor closes the state for a storm, you hear essential and non-essential. Okay? I do consider town hall essential, even youth and family services. I do consider the library not essential in terms of prioritization of snow plowing and sidewalk clearing. This has been going on for years, even when Public Works was fully staffed. Now they're not. They're down one or two guys. So I can't even tell you how many calls over the years I've gotten. None of the sidewalks aren't quite done. When is somebody gonna come? And so Bill Claffey and I, for now, have agreed that we're just gonna sub it out to make sure it gets done. Because last week, about a week ago, Tuesday or Wednesday, whenever it snowed last, whenever it was, whatever, I think we got an intricate, I'm not sure. I let the library do a late opening. They normally open at ten. I did a twelve o'clock late opening, but everybody in town hall had to be here at eight thirty. Youth and Family Services had to be here at eight thirty. And we're still paying those people from ten o'clock. Their union, we don't really have a provision in our contracts that if you have a snow day, you just don't get paid. If they wanna fill out their time card, it's basically paid time off that they would have to use. You know, look, it hasn't been an issue for years, right? This, this winter, it happens to be more of an issue. So I'd rather not have to pay people for not being there. I'd rather clear the sidewalks, clear the parking lot. Everybody's at work on time. Nobody's fielding phone calls. They can't get in. You know, the sidewalks aren't clear. Dangerous for the workers, for the public. You know, it's just, so I talked to Bill. I said, Bill, I can't do this right now. Let's, let's get this done. Let's just do it once and do it right. So.
So just, just to clarify there. So we're subbing out extra, we're subbing out the libraries specifically, or we're subbing out?
Just the library.
Just the library to make sure that the parking lot and the sidewalks are clear so that it can open at normal time.
Very simple. I called Jesse Dibble, and I just said, Jesse, can you fit it in? He goes, yeah.
And this comes out of the snow removal budget?
Yeah, yeah.
Could it exist? So it's nothing extra.
Which, you know, this year might make budget. Last year's it hasn't. So. One other thing, we, Leanne and I did meet with this HR group, and they did give us a, we met with them for about an hour, even more than an hour, and they gave us a proposal. So their phase one statement of work is personnel file audit, medical file audit, I nine files audit, file retention, purge policy, compliance, timekeeping records, background checks, yeah, we're doing background checks, and drug screen records, compensation, job descriptions for FLSA, federal labor, what is that? I know it's a wage. FLSA status and classification.
Standards Association or something.
Review salary and promotion adjustment approval process. We review payroll and OT approval procedures. Review all exempt job descriptions. Review and evaluate. I mean, it's quite a, quite a list. Review and evaluate all current HR policies, which we did about five years ago, and we spent quite a bit of money with Robin Kaler from Rose Kaler. She did an exceptional job, and they already looked at it, and they said it looks really good still. But they're gonna review it to make any, you know, update it, make any changes that need to be done. Review our employment application and offer letters. Verify budget management approval for open requisitions, compliance with new hire introductory period. Review offer salary approval procedures. Review all our pre and post-employment documents. Review of staffing, standard operating procedures are established, new employee, new employee orientation, status of mandatory labor posters, which are all over the building. Review internal job posting procedure. And so they're gonna do a general review of all our CBAs as they do all this. So, you know, it's kind of like an audit of what's going on here. And it was very reasonably priced for that. It's about sixty-five hundred dollars to do all that. So we'd like to proceed with that. We were, since we're been down here and there on personnel in town hall, not really down, but we're about to, you know, Bridget, when Bridget got promoted, we had an opening there, which, because we had a medical issue with one of our employees who never came back, we had, we have some room in budget to do this. So we're proposing to do this, get them in, get a good look, and possibly start bringing them on as kind of a permanent consultant. You know, there's gonna come a time when there's gonna be turnover in town hall at, in my position, not in my, in the first selectmen's position, finance director's position, and to have something established and have somebody here to help whoever were to come in next, whatever that may be, would be, I think, helpful. So that's kind of the idea. Just kind of get an audit. They'll get a sense of what's going on.
So right now for the sixty-five hundred, it's, it's an audit. It's a, it's a look at it from a management perspective. What needs to be done, provide some recommendations, but they're not necessarily going to do
They're not coming, they're not coming on.
To fix it. They're not coming on.
No, they're gonna identify, we, they're gonna identify weaknesses and where we can move.
All right. And then how are we looking at next step?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, when you look across the amount of employees that we have between town hall, Board of Education, police.
You say not Board of Ed?
No, I know. I'm saying across all of those units for the town. That's a lot of employees that we have, and, you know, so, you know, I'd asked when we had the CLA study if we should be thinking about doing, going in the direction of some sort of shared service. And I just think that we should be thinking about that, you know, to provide that type of consistency across all of the personnel that we have. If we're going to be thinking about bringing a firm on, you know, in the future.
Yes. So the question is?
Not a question. Stakeout.
Yeah. Yeah. And that is the idea. And, you know, without really discussing it right now, we tried to get a range of what that might look like. And so we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that, okay? And it may be something that we start with. See if the board, yeah, let's get through this, and then we will move forward. Okay? We did like them, though. I thought they were very professional. They already do, do this. Well, look, they work a lot with the private sector. They also work with three or four towns at least, from what I could tell. In the public sector, several of the towns, they do everything. This is what they do for them. So they're very capable from, I forget how many people they have in Connecticut. I wanna say like twenty-five or so. And then they have people scattered throughout the country if you need other services. Is that your take on some?
Yes, yes, that was what you said.
So. Anyway, I have that.
Do, do we need motion or?
No, I think, I don't think so. I just wanted, it's more of a advisory. And then when they come back, if, with a proposal, if it, depending on, well, a proposal of services that we are going to rely on year over year is going to have to be budgeted and funded. So that would be next.
So we don't have that jumping agenda items ahead? We don't have anything in the budget right now?
We don't. We don't.
Decide to.
So a couple of ways that can happen. Board of Finance, at any time, based on the recommendation the Board of Selectmen can add to the budget. And we can also fund it with other reserves right now, or whenever, and then add it to the fiscal twenty-seven budget. It can get done.
Yeah, okay.
You know, that's not the issue.
Great. So we're not, we're not, our hands aren't tied for the next year.
They're not tied.
Great.
And that, that isn't our intention at all. Our intention was, you know what, this might be very useful to begin to implement so that whether it's two years, three years, four years, five years, this is handled. And nobody has to worry about that as part of their job even. So whether it's one year, one to five years, you know, and whatever it is, and depending on whatever we feel we need right now, and believe me, we'll bring it to the board. This is something I know of concern to you, Matt and Scott too, and so we'll, we'll talk about it. Okay? All right. Any, anything from you guys? Any, any comments?
Just, I mean, any perspective on a sense of timing? We'd gone to outside counsel for an opinion on some of the recommendations from the PERF study, and it's, I think we're pushing a month.
Yeah.
At this point, so I was just wondering.
Yeah. So our town council has communicated a confidential document to the chairman of the police commission on the recommendations.
So we've received a recommendation from outside counsel?
Um, there's been a confidential communication from town council to the chair, which I've seen on the recommendations of the PERF report. Obviously, that is something that the police commission is considering tomorrow night.
Okay.
That's all I have on that.
Got it.
That's all I have.
So is there the ability in an executive session or some other mechanisms for Scott and I to be?
Yeah. Let me, the best format for that would probably be at the police commission meeting. So I'd have to explore that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry to be circumspect on that and cautious, but I really kind of have to be at this point.
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand the, the need for caution and following.
And confidentiality.
Confidentiality appropriately. So I just.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, too. And, all right, any, Scott, anything? I, I know, I don't, we know I have, there's other items, but I'm just not. All right. Why don't we move on to the minutes from January twenty-eighth?
I'm making motion that we approve the minutes from January twenty-eighth.
I'll second the motion. All right. Any additions or anything? You're none. All those papers can go up at the same time.
Aye.
Aye. Matt, do, did you vote aye, or do you wanna abstain, or?
I voted aye.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah.
Yep.
I watched the main game.
Yep. Actually, I think all you need to do is review the minutes.
Yeah.
And you're.
You don't need to be in attendance.
Um, all right. So next item is, this will be quick. So the land trust item, let's just go in order here.
Yeah.
So we have open space funds of about, Scott, you were on that committee many, many years ago. I think there's about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in there. There is the potential of the purchase of the brown property, which is about a hundred thousand. I'm still, I acquired in probate just like a week ago. Apparently, by the end of the month, they have to file the final tax documents. So there should be some movement towards closure on that. We'll see where, what it is. And then this is simply ten thousand. So I was at the Preserve stewardship day. It was a Saturday. Kathy Connolly organized it. Chris Cock, Chris Kreider, Ray Allen, and what a turnout there was on, I, I forget what it was, January tenth, something on a Saturday over at Town of the Duffy Pavilion. There had to be sixty, seventy people there. Citizens very interested in helping out with the preserve and other, even the Essex Land Trust were there. The part, you know, they obviously connect to the preserve. And the land trust was there, John Obrin, Anna Termini, Anna Termini. And I was talking to Anna, and they had this picture of land that they want to acquire over near the old Sabre Racket Club. And it is before you now. It is, we printed out the maps. There will be an ability for about six parking spaces there that they can build. Apparently, there's a, you know, obviously beautiful water area in the middle of it. There'll be some potential, you know, paths around it. This connects, as you can see, to the Point Kowski property in the southwest. Actually, that's it. I gotta get the arrows straight. Yeah, no, I think the way it prints is north, south, east, west. So I think in the southwest corner, it connects to the Point Kowski property, which is about a hundred plus acres. I think you guys probably know that. That's where that, you know, the haunted house is, whatever, that's falling apart. I don't, that property hasn't moved at all, but if it ever does move, there'd have to be some sort, let's say, somebody wanted to go up there and do a development or even a commercial development, there would have to be some open space set aside. So in theory, you might be able to gain access to public space going from one fifty-four all the way to that side, which would be pretty interesting. Look, I think, I love that the land, this is about a three hundred thousand dollar purchase, is what I understand. They were just ten thousand short. And so I looked at Anna. I'm like, why don't you come to the town? You know, you, you know, our land trust does a great job. There, you know, there there are other land trusts that are quite wealthy in Essex in line, and I wouldn't classify ours as that. But ours, great people work hard, and they'd like to acquire this as open space. So that's what I suggested to them. We have funds dedicated for this. It's a very small amount. And I've just wanted, I, I raised it to the Board of Finance last Tuesday. I'd probably go back to them for consent. The money has already been appropriated for open space. I don't believe there needs to be a vote of the Board of Finance. But I would say that we should vote, even though I don't think I have it out for a vote. But anyway, what are, what are the thoughts on this?
I think it's a, a good idea. I think you're, you're locking up some property, and it's a nice thing. You have people that are doing good work, that have done good work, and I think that's the whole reason we established a land acquisition committee.
So this property was, I know it's been considered by the Racket Club to be sold in the past. There was a group, a commercial group, looking at purchasing the Point Kowski property. They possibly needed this property as another ingress egress somehow, somewhere on this property. I don't know where, Matt. But obviously, that didn't come to pass. So the land trust has now identified this. So I think it's good. I mean, it, look, the land trust is, you know, I think they're just trying to identify parcels that should be protected. Apparently, as you can see in the package, there is some flora that is valuable and of interest. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I, I'm very much in favor. Obviously, I brought it up to them.
Yeah. I, I mean, it's, it's good in terms of, on the conservation side. I mean, we've had a lot of conversation over the last year and a half with the tree committee and, you know, tree, tree and canopy coverage in town. So it helps to ensure that. Just a clarification. So there's gonna be six parking spots to allow for public access to this?
Don't quote me on that. I asked John that specific question. I said, how will the public use this property? And he said he believes, well, he knows there was an area off Springbrook Road there where they're gonna believe they can get, it wasn't much more than six.
An easement or something to get into there? Okay. And then they, the land trust will be responsible for and creation of trails and maintenance of the property, not, not park and rec, or?
Not park and rec.
Okay.
Nope. I don't think we're looking to, obviously, we're not looking to develop it as a park. This is open space. People can go there. You know, I, I'm sure people will bring their dogs there and let them swim, but I don't think that's the intent, anyway. Turtle Creek has become, you know, that's why, that's why the nature conservancy, nature conservancy, Salt Turtle Creek to the Essex Land Trust is some issues with dogs, and Essex Land Trust is better able to police that. So, anyway.
Uh, one other question, just about the Point Kowski property. And you had mentioned that in the past, you know, a group might have needed this property in terms of being able to come up with the right development agreement. And so if that happened in the future with the new group, they wouldn't, they don't come to the town. They would go to the land trust to work out whatever deal they need to work out.
You know, if, if the land trust buys this, you know, query whether they won't just throw a conservation easement on it. I don't know.
Okay.
So if that happens, they may not be able to do that, period, flat out. So, look, I don't, not a developer. I, I remember that conversation that they were, because it involved housing. So that was, that's fine.
Okay.
But anyway, why don't, why don't we just, I'll bring it to the Board of Select, Board of Finance. Is there general consent that we can use the open space funds for this and for the land trust? I'm not gonna take the vote. I don't think they need to. The money's appropriated.
Yes, I think that this makes sense for those funds. That's what they're appropriated for.
Scott, yeah?
I'm in support.
Okay. All right. So, good. And I think, I don't know when they plan, they plan on purchasing it soon. John sent me a note saying that they have reserves that they can use to complete the purchase, but would look to the town to get it reimbursed. So, very good. Thank you. All right. We're gonna move on to the budget. You have the budget message. We've reviewed. So a couple of things in here. You know, the Board of Ed came to the Board of Finance, whenever it was, three, three weeks ago or so, with an increase, I think, somewhere in the three, three range, three, three and a half. They added a quarter of a million dollars in the last couple of weeks. Apparently, there is a need for another administrator at the Good, at the Goodwin School, according to Chris, our superintendent. So that will be looked at by the Board of Finance. And so they added a quarter of a million dollars to the Board of Ed budget. So that obviously increased the budget a fair bit. The mill rate at this point increases point four two, not awful. There's one other hit to the budget this year. First of all, we're getting slightly less money in state aid, according to the governor's budget. I think it was like ten thousand about, maybe a little less. Insignificant. But the other hit to the, other hit to the mill rate was the new assessment on motor vehicle taxes. Was it twenty million in assessed value that we lost on that? Now, obviously, this is the year we take the hit on that. After that, it's kind of just worked, you know, kind of worked into the budget. However, the grant list, you know, did show some improvement, so there was some offset to that. So all in all, I wasn't unhappy with that. I will tell you that CCM is very unhappy with the governor's budget. Just feels like special ed needs to be funded a lot more, and education in general needs to be funded a lot more. So CCM is gonna be, put a big push on the legislature. So CCM has their one, I think it's their one twenty-nine, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand kids who kind of got lost in the sauce during COVID and subsequent to that. So they're putting a big push on funding after-school programs and education and special education to get those kids back and make sure it never happens again. So they were very, I will tell you, Joe Delong was very direct at a CCM meeting the other day, saying that he thought the governor's budget was almost irresponsible. Towns like New London at our meeting and a couple other larger towns are really concerned. New London is essentially taking a hit in revenue from the governor's budget. A decrease, not even a. Uh, a decrease, not even a level funding, according to Mayor Pissaro. Uh, one of the things that has been raised is. Yeah, we've been held harmless over the last six years. But we're losing ground because being held harmless. When inflation is going up, whether it's going up two percent or seven percent. Uh, flat funding is a, flat funding is a property tax increase. Uh, and that's all it's been, uh, for the town of Old Saybrook and for a lot of towns. And that is where. That's where the argument is at the state level is there's just, um, flat funding isn't good enough. And, uh, the funding needs to increase. I'm not, I, I'm not here to tell you where the money should come from. All right. Uh, you know, the governor makes a big show of having not increased income tax, which is great. Um, but. He, you know, he's not helping and this is a bipartisan consensus, not helping with the property tax at all. For towns and cities. Um, we've talked, I've been here thirteen years. Property tax reform at the state level has been talked about every year. I've almost, I've just thrown up my hands at this point because I don't believe it'll ever happen. But I think this board well knows that the property tax, uh, for capital is. Uh, well, property tax in general is regressive, but the property tax in Connecticut is one of the highest in the country. And, uh, for many towns becoming unsustainable. Um, and I, I don't know what direction that goes in eventually. Um, you know, the cost of education locally is up and up and up. Special ed. Is a huge driver of this. Uh, you know, more kids have. Are classified with disabilities than ever before. Um, you know, obviously some more severe than others. So, um, it, it's, it's a problem. And I don't know what the solution is. I don't know the long-term sustainability of it, uh, whether it's a large town or smaller towns. But, um, I will tell you that statewide costs in CCM are a little bit. Uh, disgusted, uh, with the policies over the last six years. There's one other small hint to the budget. So there was, last year, the legislature, the legislature is very good at giving exemptions. To people that impact the local property taxes. So they sit there and they look like heroes. Oh. And I, I am not arguing against it, but. Firefighters, you get a two thousand dollar property tax exemption, not one thousand. It went up to two thousand. With no assistance from the state. So they look great, but it, it's a sixty thousand hit to our budget. Uh, they passed a veteran's property tax exemption last year. One hundred percent exemption from property taxes for veterans that are classified as disabled. Um, and I'm going to get some of the details on this wrong, but what's essentially happening, happening is. You can be classified as disabled, but not be a hundred percent disabled. And so a lot of towns, we're losing, I think it's about twenty-five thousand in this budget this year. Um, I would be surprised to see that number increase a little bit, but what's happening is. Towns are, are, are very much aware that there are veterans that are very gainfully employed. Who are taking this property exemption, who are not. Literally one hundred percent disabled, which I think was the intent of the legislation. So there is a big push to, um. Amend that statute to tighten up the definition of who and who is not one hundred percent disabled. So there were several, and there might be a few more out there, but there were several hits to the budget this year. From the state level, from the local level. Um. I'll, I'll be honest with you, you know, I'm not unhappy with, uh, point four two. Uh, I was a little concerned. We did a first pass. It was a little higher than that, but, uh, we went back. There is growth in town. You know, Yale, New Haven is obviously building, you know, we have the Hartford Healthcare Buildings, you know, there, there's construction going on. There's more on, uh, Spencer Plain Road. We have a new medical facility going in over there. You know, and there's going to be some development on Route One on the west end of town. What it is, you know, whether it's Big Y, uh, whether it's, uh, Whole Foods. Uh, we also know Ron Lyman is doing some development over there proposed. So. The town seems to be an attractive place to still invest, but, um. Uh, you know, I think we need to be very conscious of the mill rate and, uh, how high it goes and, um. We need to invest, but we need to be prudent. So, um. I, I don't need to go through this whole thing with you guys. Have you guys reviewed this? Um, uh, I don't need to go through every bit of it. Um. I will say that I believe there is one area that, um. Where the funding will not be needed. And, uh, I believe the probate court is probably going to end up staying. Uh, in town hall. I don't know that yet. We're working with our architect. Um, he has not gotten us, or they have not gotten us their final plans yet. Leanne, where is that in here?
Um, it's the probate court thing?
Yes.
Um, it's under political subdivisions, but, um, it's not listed out specifically. What, what you put in there. So you put twenty thousand in, and then thirty-six thousand, so up to two thousand.
That's a fourteen. Uh, I am hopeful that, um, we will be able to claw that back. Uh, and keep the probate court here because I, the more I thought, the more, not the more I thought about. The more we talked about it, with the chief probate court administrator at the state level, probate judge. Uh, I'm hopeful we can keep them in the building and satisfy their security and space needs. Um. That's just, that's just an overall. Uh, we had three percent increases with the support union, uh, and the police union. Three percent salary increases, of course, uh, in addition to step increases here and there. Um, Leanne, anything else you want to point out? The finance director, I should let the finance director talk.
Yeah, the, the biggest driver of the one point seven percent increase, which is actually really great, is salaries. And it's in addition to the, um, contractual wage, we added those additional hours, but you've seen that in all of their presentations. I do like to point out, um, some of the caveats, uh, is the Ethan family, uh, appropriation of the hundred eighty-eight thousand. We're going to use ten thousand from the income fund and, um, one hundred and thirty thousand towards debt service from WPCA. And then in the changes that, uh, the first selectmen made to the regular budget, um, are, are listed out. Uh, down below and they're mainly in the police department budget to twenty-seven thousand that they had requested to be increased. We took them away. We took them away. Um, and also we received some clarity.
Let me, let me, I want to, I want to comment at that. So when they were talking, when the police commission spoke to the police chief. In the budget meeting, they said, since we have that money. Should we appropriate it somewhere else? And the, the chief's answer was, I asked for what I needed for. And they added it anyway to certain line items. So, um, I am. Adhering basically to the police chief's budget request. Which was increased actually by the police commission, right? Or.
Technically, yes, because we budget workers' comp and that.
Oh, that's where the savings were. That's where, yeah.
Savings were, but they had that number before I finalized it. And so he presented the higher number. And, and I decreased it and then they increased it back up.
Yeah.
Um, but also on the, um, police department budget, I also want to mention the other difference between what the commission has presented. Um, the, that twenty-seven thousand dollar increase, which was reduced by the first selectman. And also the ninety thousand for the, um, uh, vehicles was, they had recommended it. To be in, in that budget there and. Through our workshops or the selectmen board of finance, that ninety thousand is now in the capital account. So the overall budget. Wasn't affected by that, but we just put the ninety thousand in a different spot under capital. To be consistent with how we handle all of our capital and our five-year plan and things like that.
We did that with the library, uh.
And, um, and, and then in the last few weeks, a couple of weeks, we, uh, received from our actuary millman some clarity on what the. Um, actuary defined contributions was, would be. And the towns came in as we. Estimated, which was good news. We didn't have to change that number. And the, um, fire department, because of the cost of building increases that we look at every ten years, increased, uh, by nineteen thousand. So. We add that to the budget as well. Those are the ma- major changes. After everybody has presented and when we did our final review.
So, look, one, one thing that I'm very proud of, uh, and I think we should be, uh, as. A board or financed as a town, our pension, we make. The contribution that our actuary asks us to make and that is not done in every town. Uh, it's done in a lot of towns. But I would probably say it's done, not done in thirty to fifty percent of towns. Uh, with underfunded pensions. So our pension plan, which still. Our defined be- benefit pension plan still exists for public safety and grandfathered workers. Which hard to believe, eight years ago, we started a defined contribution plan. And that is really starting to tilt in favor of the defined contribution employees in this town. Yet we're, we are, we have always, uh, over the years. As new employees have stopped not contributing to the defined benefit plan because they're in a DC plan. We had to increase, because there were still people in the defined benefit plan, we had to increase the funding for that to the point. Uh, where we are now, which is, uh, making the contribution. We've lowered the discount rate over the years. Back in two thousand eleven, it was eight point two five. It is now six point seven five. And our actuary has told us, I'm not recommending you change that. The pension board said, should we consider changing it? She said, no. And that's Milliman. It's not some fly-by-night firm. So. Uh, we hung with it and, um, that's where we are. So I know that's not. The sexiest part of the budget, but, uh, honestly, it isn't. I mean. But i- it's so, it's critical to the long-term health of the town. And that's why I bring it up.
Can I ask a clarification?
You may, absolutely. That's why we're here.
On the police budget piece, because I thought I followed everything and then I think I got confused. Just want to clarify. So when we originally discussed the police budget, it was presented early on and there was. Uh, I don't know, twenty-seven thousand that was potentially going to be reduced.
Was reduced.
Was reduced.
They, yes, was reduced.
Was reduced in what was presented by the chief. And then the police commission discussed it. They put that twenty-seven back in. That's the budget the police commission passed.
Correct.
But then the budget that we are using then goes back to what the chiefs recommended was not the budget.
On the operational pieces. And so it is twenty-seven thousand dollars lower.
It is twenty-seven thousand dollars lower than what the police commission recommended.
Yes.
So how often does that happen? That if a com- commission recommends a budget. That is different than what the department head recommends, that we, we don't take the commission recommended budget?
So. Uh, probably very infrequent. Um. But it's not in the operations portion of the budget that the reduction happened. It's on workers' comp, which is Leanne's piece.
Yep.
So it, you know, the workers' comp ended the budget went down. These workers' comp for ten years has been flat to now. So Leanne got the numbers this year. And when she finally was gi- giving it to the police commission, police chief. Oh, you don't need to budget in your budget twenty-seven thousand dollars. So the police commission then. Looked for areas to quote unquote, right-size the budget. And they asked the chief, said, hey, what do you say we add, you know, ten thousand to electricity? The chief's response was, I asked for what I need. So he funded it to a level and they said, well, we think you need more in electricity. Now, we did add.
I was, I actually made a mistake.
Okay.
They reduced it. I mean, they increased it by twenty-seven thousand and you reduced it by twenty-two thousand because we did keep five thousand.
I, I did actually.
I want to make sure that's.
Because I, that was one area where I'm like, you know what, electricity, we should probably increase that budget a little bit. So. Uh, so it was a very unique situation actually in that. Um, and. Uh, now, uh, a- as you know, and let's, let's just be out in the open with it. They also kept the chief's, uh, salary flat and that is reflected in this budget too. Um, and, uh, you know, that can go to the board of finance at this point. Um. And really, that's it. Um, so it was, it was a unique scenario. That's all.
Have you communicated to the chair?
Uh, have I commu-? No, I don't think so. I don't think he knows that yet.
Okay.
Uh, look, that, I don't, you know, it's twenty-two thousand. Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it's going to make a huge difference to them. Um. You know, I relied on the chief telling me essentially, not me, but telling the commission. That he felt his budget was funded the way it should be.
Okay.
That's it.
I have a couple of.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm also, I think that I.
Got it.
Been through a few times.
So, just a, just a couple of comments. Thank you. I mean, I, every year. I feel like we get a better, we get better at our process in terms of going through, um, and it's really not that painful. Yeah. So I just want to thank you, Leanne, for getting everybody organized and Carl, uh, steering the ship. Appreciate it. Um, so just a couple of, uh, comments. We, we talked during board of selecting comments around the HR piece. You know, and I'm glad that they're, that we're exploring professional services. I mean, when we. When we look at the budget every year, we talk about so much of it being beyond our control to, to cut. Because it's personnel, it's contract increases. Um, we're government, right? Yeah. We, it's people. It's our teachers, it's, it's people that run departments, it's police officers, all the people that do the services in town. That's what government is. It's a lot of services. It's not necessarily, um, brick and mortar.
True.
So I think it's really important, since such a large portion of our budget is people, that we support all of those people. So I'm glad we're doing the, you know, exploring other ways to strengthen our HR services. And I'm glad that we have a way. When we get additional information, we have a way that we can start to move forward on that that's not in this year's budget. So I just want to address it from that point. The other thing that I, I just want to bring up and ask for some additions to the budget.
Yep.
They're minor, but I just think that it's worth, you know, from this perspective.
Mm-hmm.
For the last several years, through a variety of factors, we've run surpluses. It's great. You know, if we're managing things well internally, we're being smart with our decisions. And then we have surplus funds that we can invest in the town. At the same time, we're seeing, you know, right now, a lot of uncertainty in terms of federal funding and then how that trickles down. And that puts a lot of strain on nonprofit organizations and service providers and people that, um. Are assisted by those types of organizations that need to step up. When you look at Old Saybrook's population, we have two numbers that jump out. We have. We have increasingly older population that lives in town. And then we also have a percentage of our town, it's nearly one in three residents that are homeless, that are just on the fringes. They're not living in poverty, um, but they're living paycheck to paycheck. And that's young people. That's old people, retirees. A lot of different people are included in that. And so a- as we think about what we usually do with our surpluses, we usually are making investments in projects. That need to move forward, that all of the town residents benefit from. But I think one of the places that it's not necessarily the sexiest thing to do with reserves is to put them towards specific services. We try to invest them in something that's going to be here for a while. So I think that we need to think about looking at how we could help those people that are on the fringes, that are part of our community and in a more. Concrete way. And so in talking with some of the organizations that are in our political subdivisions, um, I have two proposals. Shoreline Soup Kitchen. Five thousand additional dollars that we put into our operating budget. Will allow them to provide fifteen thousand meals for people in Old. that we put into our operating budget will allow them to provide fifteen thousand meals for people in Old Sabre. They have eight hundred and sixty people from Old Sabre that regularly visit the Old Sabre, um, food pantry site. The other thing, though, that they don't track is they have people that visit other sites and other surrounding towns because it's a regional organization. Sometimes people don't want to go to the food pantry in their town because they don't want to be seen by their neighbors walking into the food pantry. But five thousand dollars is nearly three hundred meals a week that we're providing to people that needs to take advantage of it. And it's something that's scalable. It's something that is allowing them also to build into their budget. So instead of it being a gift that's handed to them, if we make that decision at surplus time, it's a way for them to actually start to think about how they can best deploy these funds and have that kind of stability during the year. So that's one piece. The other piece is with the estuary council. Um, I know that in, in past years, they have always adapted their ask to what they need. But I, I talked with Stan and with Heather about what they need. And twenty-five thousand dollars will provide three hundred and seventy rides for seniors that need to get some medical appointments, um, and other things that just trying to use nine-town transit and more of a bus system doesn't work because they need assistance. They need that personal care. And it's also, this twenty-five thousand would be something that is not, they're locked into spending it. It can be flexible. It can be based on demand. Um, and I know twenty-five thousand is a, a big ask, you know, at this point. And so maybe that's something that we think about creatively. Maybe we can put five thousand or ten thousand into the operating budget and, and think about then doing the rest through surplus so that Stan and the estuary can start to plan to provide these services. But then we don't have to fund it all through one mechanism. But I just think that these are, at the end of the day, this is thirty thousand dollars that are directly impacting Old Sabre residents that need the support. They're part of our community, and I think that we need to think about how we're, um, providing services to, and, and supports to everybody across the town. So.
So, um, I, Leanne sees it every year. I get requests from many, many, many other nonprofits that we don't fund every year. Uh, Eddie House, and they tell me how many Old Sabre residents use the Eddie House. There's a couple other community areas and, uh, literacy group, uh, there's a literacy group. And I had an Old Sabre resident plead for me to support them several have over the years. We haven't included that. Uh, we started including, uh, Hope Partnership last year, uh, and the Garden Club this year. So, um, just a quick question, um. Yeah, so I, I, you know, both of those are regional organizations. I mean, the catchment area for the kid, Shoreline Soup Kitchen goes to East Line. And I know as far east as East Line, and I know it, I don't know where else it goes. I mean, from East Line back to Old Sabre, I don't know how far north it goes or how far west it goes. Um, and so I, I guess, I, you know, how do we know, why don't we give the money to Sue Consult? You know, who got a lot of ARPA money and is still using it, right?
Yes.
That, that's a little bit of my, you know, Sue, it was like a quarter of a million dollars in ARPA funds that she has to spend, and she gave a report. Uh, and I'm not sure how she's using that money exactly. But it's towards the needs of our citizens, um, that show up at the Grace Church. Um, so I mean, a, a little bit, more money is always better for these nonprofits. We see it at the state level. You know, I was talking about education. At the state level, the nonprofits are really saying that they're falling behind. And I have no doubt a lot of them are. And I just don't, I, my, my only concern, one of my concerns, Matt, is, um, is that, you know, not that our money should be only used for Old Sabre residents, but I feel like we owe it to the taxpayers to make sure it would be localized, and same thing with the estuary.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and there are, well, how do you, how would they, how would they do that with the estuary? They're going to deny rides to a Kellenworth?
Well, they, so with the estuary, I mean, they know where they're picking people up. And so they already provide rides. This would be on top of the service provision that they're providing. They're already telling people they can't give them a ride.
Right.
So they can keep track and make sure that they're doing Old Sabre rides versus non-rides and, and providing their service there.
Yeah. So, um, so one other thing is I wish I had seen this. What I don't understand also is I have a very good relationship with Amy Hollis over at SSKP. I mean, I'm, I actually, and you guys know this, was very, with the ARPA funds, that was one of the original appropriations we made was to get them a new refrigerated food truck. And I led the charge on that, and they got it. They just had it delivered about a year ago. It was crazy how long it took. And, and with Stan also, Stan at the estuary and Heather, I just, I, I, I wish I had seen a proposal before this. You know, something in writing, um, other than it, and I, I, I trust you implicitly with your information, I do. But I don't understand why, wh- when we get their letters, why there wasn't like a, can I sit down? We'd like to talk more about this. In addition to that, the estuary, as you know, used to get more money from the town, and it got cut back during COVID, and they're, they're, they've been making a flat request to the town for probably three or four years now. So I, I, I personally would have liked to have seen a, a more robust proposal to us, to this board, or to, to me, to bring to the board, not that it has to be through me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because both of you, uh, bring projects forward also, which I appreciate. And, and that's a little bit of, uh, my concern also. Um, so we have in theory, some money to play with, with the probate court. Right? You know, we, you, while you were talking about this, you mentioned the AR, HR piece. One option is to take ten thousand and put it in the budget towards HR services. That's one option. And reduce that probate line.
Right.
Uh, and, you know, and, and get that in the budget and start it. Uh, you know, I don't have an, an objection to lifting, you know, increasing some of this. I also, uh, you know, was talking to Ray Al and at Park and Rec about the Duffy Pavilion recently, or that came up, and, uh, they overbook down there. There's always, um, more people requesting it than, you know, or requesting certain nights anyway. And I'd like to work out an arrangement with the estuary where we can start giving overflow to their room and get them rental fees and maybe some income there. I emailed Stan last week. He didn't get back to me on that. I think it'd be, uh, a, it's sixty bucks an hour. You know, if they did that two or three nights a week, they could start making extra money. So I'd like to talk about him, about ways that they could generate revenue with the town also. Um, you know, I'm, twenty-five thousand seems like a big ask to me, honestly, it does. Um, I'm not saying it's not for a great purpose. But there's needs everywhere from almost every nonprofit. And, uh, so I don't know what you want to do. Um, what's the inclination here? Do you want to, did you want to? So maybe the one option is to, um, get a proposal from them? Can they get us a proposal?
Yeah, so I, I can share what they sent over to me in writing with you both.
Yeah.
Um, and we can, I can do that.
Yeah.
Um, we, I mean, one option is for us to start the conversation today and look at this in terms of what we can do with year-end surplus. If, if that's a potential direction that we want to go, if we feel, I mean, we've done our due diligence, then on the numbers and the proposal that.
I think that's the way I prefer to move forward. I think that, you know, so I look at the way we, we do this planning year after year after year. I appreciate what you're doing, and the homework you put into that. The care and thought you put into that. I also think that, you know, the town has put together budgets annually, year after year after year, that I'm so proud to be a part of and, and look out and say, this town is great. We do have incredible services for all of our people. I think that we do provide effectively and, and, and well. So you know, we have a proposal that we've generated at this point in time. I'm, I'm contented with it.
I, I'd, I'd rather, um, I'd rather do that, Matt, to be honest with you, see the proposal, see what they're requesting. Um, I just feel like adding it to the budget now on a conversation after the month of January, reviewing the budget. What I would propose, now that we're talking about it, and I'll leave it to the board to, for further discussion here, is let's take ten thousand dollars from that probate fund and do something with it. We, I, I think there's about fourteen thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And we could start an HR piece and be on our way. That, that might be a good idea. And that way, when they come back, we can hire them to do stuff. Or you know, I, I have, I know the Shoreline Soup Kitchen much, I feel like, better. Well, I, I know the estuary pretty well too. I hadn't heard about that need before. I know they give rides. But I, I, I.
And I think here's the, you know, the one piece of perspective that I have. You know, you know, I used to run a nonprofit organization, we're neighbors up in the town, right? I never increased my request to the city because you're running a nonprofit and you're always worried that if you ask for more, that might be the reason that they say no. You're always trying to manage within resources. So I can, from my point of view, I completely understand why the estuary has always tried to right-size and argue that they're right-sizing, and that even if there's need, you know, for an incremental amount, why an organization is saying, yeah, we're still happy with what we're getting in the budget, because they can plan around that, and they don't want to see a spike one year that goes away.
Well, so both the estuary and, uh, the River Valley Transit routinely have asked. They used to ask for two to three percent every year.
Okay.
And for the life of me, I don't know why the estuary hasn't done. That, they did for the first probably nine years that I, I've been first selectman, every year. They asked for like a cost of living increase. And after COVID, they decreased it. And the year they decreased it, I called Stan. I called him. I said, Stan, is this a typo? He's like, no, it's not. And, um, and in fact, I think we even left it a little higher uh, than he had it requested. I know I, I thought about that for, anyway. So, um, I think there's a little wiggle room here, so I'll leave it to the board. Um, Leanne, there's, what do you figure? There was like that with the probate court, there's about fourteen thousand?
Right, there's fourteen thousand. So in, if we do it in political subdivisions, I'll just rearrange, take for ten thousand away from.
How about, do you want to, and here's a proposal, ten thousand towards HR and four thou-, uh, thirty-five hundred, just so I don't go over on your budget. Or for that, whatever the exact number is, the remainder to the Shoreline Soup Kitchen?
I mean, yeah, that makes.
And then maybe hear from Stan.
Yep.
And figure out a way to maybe, uh, see, I'd like to get in. I, I called him last week.
Yeah.
Before any of this. And I said, are you interested in taking overflow right now?
Yeah.
And try to get you some extra revenue? So I'll contact him after this meeting. I, I just don't know why, you know, they haven't asked for more over the years. So, anyway.
So political subdivision will remain the same amount, and then we'll just change, change and change something.
I, I want to, I want to hear from you guys, so, whatever you like.
I, I, so it makes sense to me. Thank you. I mean, putting something in that allows us the clear path to move forward on the HR side makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Um, and something incremental to Shoreline Soup Kitchen is still going to have a respanishal impact. And I, so if it's four thousand dollars, so maybe it's not fifteen hundred meals, maybe it's twelve or fifteen thousand meals, maybe it's twelve thousand meals. You know, it still has a big impact and, and it will be meaningful for Sabre residents. My, my question is, what, how does that box us in then around probate court? We'll just use capital non-recurring funds if we need to.
Or, I don't think boxes is something.
Okay.
They want to stay, they're going to try to make it work.
Okay.
I'm, I'm relative, but even though I haven't seen the plan, other than the first meeting we had, they want to stay. And I think they're going to make it work. I'm just going to look for something else. I, I forgot now.
When do you have to pay for some of the changes up there?
Before I get into that, yes. But, um, you know, the other thing that concerns me with the estuary council of seniors is they make requests to nine towns. I think it's nine towns. Do you know exactly how many towns? The estuary council of seniors is not Old Sabre.
Right.
Estuary council of seniors.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a, it's a nine, I think it's a nine-town senior center. Um, not every town, they put up their request, not every town meets that request. Westbrook doesn't. I think Westbrook budget zero. So I also have that concern.
Yep.
Am I picking up Westbrook?
Right.
And Meals on Wheels, which is their biggest service, Westbrook, they serve Westbrook residents, and as of like two, three years ago, I remember I talked to Noel Bishop, the previous first selectman, and said, why aren't you budgeting anything for this? He's like, because we have our own little senior center, and they do. Um, but Meals on Wheels goes to Westbrook, and they were not budgeting for that. And I don't know what other towns are budgeting, if they're meeting the full amount or not. That's something I'd like to hear from Stan too. Who is budgeting and who isn't?
Mm-hmm.
We meet your full request. Shoreline Soup Kitchen is a little different, um, because that is completely voluntary on the town's part. As is the es- technically, the estuary is too, but if you're serving residents Meals on Wheels, you should be contributing. So. Um, I will get in touch with Stan, okay? I will make sure that happens.
Great.
All right? You got it?
Um, yes, I'm gonna just rearrange political subdivision.
You're gonna leave it level funded?
I'm gonna leave it level funded and just in the detail.
Ten thousand towards HR? Are you good with that?
Yep.
All right. I'm actually excited about that.
Great.
I think that's awesome.
Me too.
Yeah.
Little bit off your plate?
No, it's, it's actually really good, um, because if, if that'll get us some services and then next year, kind of build on that. Um, that'll go a long way. All right. So we have that. I'm going to make a motion to approve the budget as presented with the modifications that we made in political subdivisions. Second for discussion. Um, I guess we probably could have done that a while ago, but, um, we've discussed, that'll be reflected in the minutes, made some changes to the soup kitchen and to HR services, um, and with those changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. I'd like, I'm going, table item C, uh, wanted to have Chris Costa in here to talk about that. She felt there was a little more to it, um, and she should be present. Um, item number D, I'll move, um, the seasonal classification, uh, obviously this was in the package. I'll move that as her second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, and, um, let's do the ENF, um, to refund the building permit fees for forty-two Rogers and seventy-six C Lane, all those in favor. Uh, and, um, let's do the ENF, um, to refund the building permit fees for forty-two Rogers and seventy-six C Lane, all those in favor, aye. Second, sorry, second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Appointment, so, um, good, bad news, good news. Bad news is, um, two of the elected Republicans, one moved out of town and the other one, I think they both moved out of town or the other one resigned, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So Peter Gallagher, who was actually really good on that board, um, moved out of town. And Matt Diamond, we're in a public session, so I need to be careful. I think he moved away.
Okay.
Um, or resigned, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Two excellent candidates came forward. You see one, James Joakim, uh, Whackam, I'm not sure how to say his last name. So Newbrainer in, at, uh, in Fenwick.
Yep.
Uh, uh, works at Conover and James Joakim was a lawyer at Conover for the last like thirty years. I mean, like long career as a corporate attorney, um, and lives in town. And he was talking to New and he wanted, you know, he retired. And he was just like, I'd like to do something. And so New referred him to me. I met Jim. And, uh, I mean, just a super guy. And uh, I immediately latched on to him and said, we might need you relatively quickly. And would you be willing to do something? And Bridget has about six appeals right now that need to be handled, so she does need a board. It's not going to be a very intense BAA season, but we need a board. So I would, uh, to fill the vacancy of the two elected positions and I'm gonna state for the record what we've typically done, or what I've typically recommended over the years. When a physician is elected, I've typically honored the party in which that person was elected. That's, that is not written in stone. Uh, it's just something that I've done. Uh, sometimes it's dismay of my party. But I've honored that. Um, so, uh, I'm going to, I, I, there's two candidates, by the way. Barbara Dennison is the other candidate. And unfortunately, February eleventh, her letter is dated. Say, Mr. Fortuna, I'm writing, and these are both Republicans, I, I want to be clear. I'm writing to express my interest in serving on the Old Saver Board of Assessment Appeals. She is a proud graduate of Old Saver High School and her son is also. With a strong background in mortgage lending, I look forward to contributing to a fair assessment of property values in our town. My experience as a mortgage loan officer has equipped me with an understanding of property valuation. I believe in the transparency in the assessment process and the importance of ensuring all citizens have a voice in this assessment process. I welcome the opportunity to contribute to the old, to Old Saver. As a member of this board, thank you for your consideration. Feel free to contact me with any questions. So these are more emergency appointments, to be honest with you.
What's the name?
Barbara Dennison. Because Bridget actually came to me about two weeks ago and said, I need a board. Um, and their work will be over and then there'll be elections this coming November.
Right.
For both of these, okay? So I'd like to, uh, on G one, uh, appoint James Joakim. So I'll make that motion, second. Uh, any discussion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'd like to add to the agenda, a Board of Assessment Appeals resignation vacancy, which appointment is until the next municipal election, November twenty-five, at which time it would, will be placed on the ballot for a term of two years until eleven eighteen. That should be twenty-seven, shouldn't it? Placed on the ballot.
How about the next ballot?
Yeah, okay. It'll be placed on the ballot for two years. It'll, it'll be up for election in November.
Yes.
Uh, so I'd like to add that to the agenda. Is there, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye. And to appoint Barbara Dennison, who, um, whether she chooses to or not, stand for election in November. Um, so I'll, I'll make that
All right, second, Matt.
All those in, uh, any discussion?
Yeah.
And I'll, literally, I'll get this letter to both of you guys. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
So interestingly, Cable TV Advisory Council, which has been dormant for years and years and years, um, I got a they wanna, uh, because, uh, they're worried about funding, Valley Shore Community Television, uh, they would like to become more active again so that they can, um, move forward with lobbying efforts and everything. Uh, we do have one, it's just hasn't been building years, um. Crazily enough, I have got two people interested. Um, I'm going to, Jim Darian is recommended, so I'll, I'll make the motion to appoint Jim.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
There is someone else who was interested. If we can have more than one member, I'll bring it to the next board meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Connecticut River Gateway Commission. This was Diane, uh, she's on our waste and recycling task force.
Stoker.
Diane Stoker. And right now we have Bill Webb.
Yep.
Is the other appointment. Ellen Fitzgerald, uh, do you have her resume and everything?
I've seen it.
Yeah. Unaffiliated voter, not a Republican. This is, this was filled by a Republican, um. Ellen is the daughter of Bill Fitzgerald and Ruth Fitzgerald. Ruth Fitzgerald was on the BAA for a year, for forty years. Bill Fitzgerald was a bit of a mentor of mine when I first started getting involved. Um, they lived on Maple Avenue. They were just wonderful, wonderful people, Bill and, and Ruth. And this is their daughter, uh, who moved back to town. I've never met her.
Well, they're, they're might, you know, righted up by where I live and knocking on doors years and years ago, just after Ruth had passed.
Oh.
Her daughter was at the house and, and that conversation came up.
Yeah, they were, they were super people. So Ellen's an unaffiliated voter, a little bit of kind of a, but she is obviously a very accomplished person. So I'd like to, um, motion to put Ellen on the board on the Gateway Commission. You good with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just need, you need good people there and, uh, people can give some thought and, uh, do it. Uh, you don't need people with an agenda. So anyways, we moved and seconded, all those in favors, signify by saying aye. All right. Oh, um, and one other thing I want to add to the agenda is so we're trying to get the Ferry Road Soccer Field in for a steep grant. And, um, one of the things we may need, and that is, I think, February, like twentieth, the deadline's coming. I'd like to add to the agenda, um, a, um, for a selectman, uh, a, um, a resolution authoriz- resolution slash authorization for the first selectman to sign any and all documents related to the steep grant. Actually, a motion that the first selectman be allowed to, uh, sign any and all documents related to the proposed steep grant, including any resolution or authorization as required by the steep grant guidelines.
I'll second that.
Okay, that way, I think we're covered. Any questions on that? We're still waiting for some information.
Do we have to, um, have a, I mean, outside of this resolution, just any resolutions that are required, do we have to do anything in terms of a, a formal commitment of funding up to a certain percentage?
Yeah. So unfortunately, we're not going to meet that with the Board of Finance, right?
Right.
Um, I would propose that we be willing to match twenty-five percent.
Yep.
So this is, I, we're waiting for an estimate on the numbers, but I'm guessing it's gonna be six hundred, at least, six hundred, six fifty, because
To six hundred, six fifty total?
Total. Yes, I'm sorry, not right. Uh, so the match would be in the one fifty range. So if you, if I said new, we can get a grade A, U four, what is it, U twelve or U fourteen? I can't remember. If you, if I said we could get a grade A field over there with bleachers, good parking lot. Um, water fountains, you know, like just all the amenities that you would expect when you go to a good field um, over there. That's the idea. So originally, when this came in, so wait, we're still on the motion part, but
Yeah.
to add to the agenda, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, so we can add, sorry, we should add this to the
So it's been moved and seconded.
Yeah, yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Sorry.
So, yeah. Uh, so I'm gonna put a motion on the table that, uh, this board allow the first selectman to sign any and all documents, including resolutions or authorizations regarding to the steep grant that we may apply pursuant to the secret guidelines at the State of Connecticut. Uh, I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Okay, all right. You have a question?
Well, I think I asked, I asked my question. So this, do we want to do in addition to this? Do we want to have the Board of Selectmen, so it can be in the application file at least, that the Board of Selectmen has
Let's do that next. Let's do that.
Do that separate eye, okay.
Let's do that next. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, hold on a second. Now I'm gonna have to
Marvel at that.
Steep grants are competitive, I wanna, you know.
Oh, I, I a hundred percent agree.
Make sure that we have
I a hundred percent agree. That's why I'm saying twenty, twenty-five percent is a significant match.
Okay, what's the minimum required?
There is no
There's no minimum. Okay, so twenty-five percent, great, okay.
Yeah, and it puts you in a far more advantageous position. So let's put a motion on the table that, um, uh, that the Board of Selectmen, um, recommends to the Board of Finance that the town contribute a twenty-five percent match to the cost of the Ferry Road project. Assuming the steep grant is awarded at the State of Connecticut. That sounds okay? We'll massage that a little bit.
Yeah, one second.
Okay, uh, it's time for discussion now. So originally, this work was put out to bid just to fix, just to fix the field. Uh, nothing else. Uh, make the field so it drains properly. And that came in about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Oh, it's almost ten, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which you know, with no, there was no grant, there was no nothing. So when the steep grants came out and we can now get up to a million dollars, not five hundred thousand. Uh, I said to Jeff Jacobson, let's do the Ferry Road field, but let's make it a great field. Let's make, let's do all the amenities that we might need, you know, bleachers, and I think there's a scoreboard and I, you know, whatever else goes into a good field, better part, you know, make that parking area better.
Bathroom. Bathroom section, maybe.
And there is a bathroom, we already talked about having a bathroom. So, um, so I think, I don't know what the number's gonna come in at. Might be like seven hundred, but less than a million, which I think is good, that we're not asking for the full million.
Yeah.
And with a match, I think that puts us in a very competitive position. One caveat to this is, we still have an outstanding steep grant.
Yep.
Which is for the sidewalks to Westbrook, which I'm hoping will get started in May. That is not a, um, deal killer for OPMs. Uh, because we already have a signed notice of grant award.
Okay.
Uh, and I think that's the key.
And we brought out the bid.
Have not gone out to bid yet, and out on that project, we have that. We are actually still waiting for some floodplain management approval from the state.
Okay.
On that. I asked last week. So anyway, uh, all right, so it's put on the table that we, um, recommend a, up to a twenty-five percent match, um, to the Board of Finance on the, uh, total awarded the, the approval of the project. All right, is there a second?
I already did that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, so we're up against it, hopefully we'll get it done.
Yeah.
Uh, Jeff, it's time for a quick executive session?
Yes.
All right, uh, so the board here is gonna go into executive session. Uh, we're gonna come out and we're going to immediately adjourn. So I'm gonna actually end the meeting. Um, I'm gonna end the recording. This is an alarmed company. Hello? Hello? Is everything okay? Uh, so we'll go in and we'll go into executive session. We're gonna come right out and adjourn, so there'll be no votes taken. So I'm gonna make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
And the only folks who'll be invited are the Board of Selectmen, no one else.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, executive session at nine fifty-six.